Like to call the January 12th regular meeting in the Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Will you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll get things rolling and start off with the roll call.
Carrie? Schlothauer?
Here.
Hampi?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Stephenson? Stephenson is not here.
All right, we'll see if he jumps on here in just a minute. Mr. Manley, any amendments to the agenda this evening?
There is no amendments.
Uh, we do, looks like ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations?
Yes, item A is the election of a Chair and Vice Chair. Although Ray Kimball is not present this evening, he did let us know though that if it was still the will of the Commission for him to be Vice Chair again, he is open to that.
Okay. I would, anyone want to put forth a nomination for Chairman?
For Chairman?
Can we do it all in one swath, Chairman and Vice Chair, or do we need to do it one at a time?
Um, I would do it one at a time.
Okay, should we start with Chair?
Yes, start with Chair.
Okay. Any of you want to make a nomination for Planning and Zoning Chairman?
I would nominate-
I'd make a nomination.
Go ahead, sir.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Go ahead.
I would nominate that we, that we keep Brian Davis as our Chair.
I second.
Okay, motion and second, call for vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Schlothauer?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Davis?
abstain. All right, look for a nomination for Vice Chair at this time.
I nominate Ray Kimball as Vice Chair.
I second.
Motion and second, call for a vote.
Schlothauer?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes. All right, so moved. Anything else on that item, Mr. Manley?
No.
Any declaration of conflict this evening from any of our Commissioners?
No.
Hearing none, seeing none, then I will move to consent calendar.
Yeah, item A is the meeting minutes from December 8th, 2020. Item B is the reasoned decision, living standard exestation file number ANNX 5 2020.
Okay. Hopefully all Commissioners had an opportunity to take a look at consent calendar items. I would entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve the 12-8-2020 consent calendar as presented.
I second.
Okay.
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Schlothauer?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes. This brings us to Citizen Issues, the section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the Commissioners on an issue that is not on the agenda. Comments on issues that are planned for future meetings, agenda should be held at that meeting. Do we have any citizen issues? Seeing none, hearing none, then no unfinished or old business, correct?
That is correct.
All right, then we will move into the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. We'll go ahead and open up the first, I believe, Ms. Laura Jones, are you presenting?
I am.
It is all yours.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
And, yes.
And can you all see my screen? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good evening Commissioners, I am Laura Jones, Associate Planner with the City of Post Falls, and I will be presenting the Nagel Storage Special Use Permit tonight. The property owner is our NextVenture LLC, and the applicant is Ace Solutions. The requested action tonight is for the approval of a special use permit to construct 14 Warehouse Office Combination Units on approximately 1.52 acres within the Community Commercial Services zoning designation. As just mentioned, the current zoning is Community Commercial Services, which does allow for the proposed use upon application and approval of the special use permit. The surrounding zoning consists of Community Commercial Services as well as some industrial. The project is located in the River Bend Focus area. It is just north of Fifth Avenue and east of Pleasant View Road, directly north of the Flying J Truck Stop. There's also a rental business in the north of the site, a RV and truck wash near the site, and also a couple mixed-use, or excuse me, not mixed-use, high-density residential apartment buildings. The applicant is looking to construct 14 Warehouse Office Combination Units. The water purveyor is East Green Acres Irrigation District, and the sewer provider will be the City of Post Falls. The future land designation for the site is Business Commercial, which supports a wide variety of general service, retail, professional office, light industrial, artisan manufacturing, and mixed uses that serve local and regional residents, as well as the traveling public. The applicant is not looking for a zone change, however, this type of use is typically reserved for the industrial zoning district, which is one of the, oh, excuse me, disregard that, I apologize, Business Commercial, which is, would support this use for the future land use map. Project description, the applicant again is proposing these 14 units. They're going to range in size between 1,500 to 1,800 square feet in size. There's going to be a shared access with the property to the east, which is the SureStay Plus Hotel. There's also a existing drainage easement in the northeast corner, and that will be retained. When looking at special use permits, there's four criteria that we work through in the review process. The first is the implementation of the special use will or will not conform to the purposes of the applicable zoning designation. Based on the Post Falls Municipal Code, and the zoning for the CCS zone, it does support uses that include retail sales or performance of consumer services, and permits with a variety of retail, professional, or service businesses, including some manufacturing, technical, or other professional uses, which this would fall under. The second criteria is whether the proposed use constitutes an allowable special use as established by this chapter for the zoning district involved, and complies with all other applicable laws, ordinances, and regulations of the city and the state. Again, the Post Falls Municipal Code, Title 18, and zoning ordinance land use table has established the warehouse office combination as an allowable use in the community commercial zone with the approval of the special use permit. The third criteria for a special use permit approval is whether the proposed use will or will not be compatible with the health, safety, and welfare of the public, or with land uses in the vicinity. The staff report does detail out how the proposed use will not have a negative impact on the health, safety, and welfare of the public or land uses in the vicinity. The staff report also includes the analysis of the road infrastructure within the vicinity of the project, and it has been determined that the road network has the capacity to handle the proposed land uses. Fifth Avenue is just south of the proposed site, and it has direct access to North Pleasant View Road, which is a minor arterial running north-south. It's about 800 feet west of the site, and it has direct access to I-90 and West Southeast Way. The site will have suitable utilities. The sewer will be connected to the city's water reclamation facilities. Domestic water will be serviced by East Green Acres Irrigation District. And then Kootenay Fire and Rescue will have a time, or will have time to review the project during the site plan review process. The last criteria is a little bit more in-depth, and it will look at whether the proposed use will or not comply with the goals and policies found within the comprehensive plan. During that analysis, there's two goals from the comprehensive plan that directly relate to this project. The first is Goal One, which is for the growth, or grow and sustain a balanced, resilient economy for Post Falls, providing community prosperity and fiscal health. And then Goal Seven, which is planning for and establishing types and quantities of land uses in Post Falls, supporting community needs and the city's long-term sustainability. Looking at how to obtain those goals, there's policies within the comprehensive plan that support those goals. There's five that were directly applying, that we can directly apply to this project. The first is Policy One, and that is to support land use patterns that foster long-term fiscal health for the community. The warehouse office combination units are typically rented or purchased for consumer businesses, and that type of use and other professional uses will contribute to fiscal health of our community. The second portion to Policy One, there's four portions for this one. The second is to maintain and enhance residential quality of life. This proposed development may offer both jobs and commercial services to the residences of Post Falls, thus enhancing their quality of life. Part Three for Policy One is to promote compatible, well-designed development. The surrounding land use is consistent with industrial and commercial developments. The existing uses range from gas station and convenience stores, fast food and drive-in restaurants, truck and RV car wash. There's a strip mall and antique mall there in a hotel. So the proposed development is consistent with the existing uses. The last portion for Policy One, oh, excuse me, that was the last portion for Policy One. The second policy that is applicable to obtain Goals One and Seven is Policy Number Eight. That is to encourage compatible infill development and redevelopment of vacant or underutilized properties within the city. As mentioned in Policy One, the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding uses, and it is considered an infill development within the city. Moving on to Policy Eleven, which is our third policy relevant to obtain our Goals One and Seven of the comprehensive plan. That is to prioritize location of new industrial development in areas that provide, one, close proximity to major transportation facilities, which, as previously discussed, North Pleasant View Road is within a third of a mile of the project site, and has direct access to both I-90 and West Southeast Way. Secondly, siting near existing industrial uses where possible. The adjacent properties are zoned commercial, however, there are also other industrial uses within the same block. Policy Eleven continues on with cost-effective access to utilities and services. We mentioned that the water purveyor is East Green Acres and the sewer is the City of Post Falls. These are both easily accessible and both located within Fifth Avenue right-of-way. And Policy Eleven also calls for the ability to minimize trucking through residential areas. North Pleasant View Road is the main access to the proposed site, and there are no residential neighborhoods between North Pleasant View and the project site. Policy Twelve is to ensure the new industrial uses near residential areas do not create noise, odor, air, or visual pollution beyond that normally associated with residential uses. The proposed use, based on the applicant's narrative, is for the storage of light equipment and supplies, and perform minor business office-related duties. So the nature of this type of use should not create noise, odor, air, or visual pollution beyond that normally associated with residential uses. Lastly is Policy Eighty-Six, and that is with the local business community to work to enhance, sustain, and diversify the local economy base by helping retain, promote, and expand existing businesses and, excuse me, and industry, as well as supporting innovation, entrepreneurial enterprises. So these two go hand in hand, and the specific use that's being proposed, these units will offer a location for both new businesses, while also allowing locations for existing businesses to expand. Policy Eighty-Six, there's two left, and that's supporting opportunities related to business campus and mixed-use models. So the proposed units are intended to house a variety of occupants. Just having that diversity in 14 different units rented by 14 different users, or, I believe these are being split into a condo subdivision, so whoever purchases those, the 14 different owners, will in itself create a mixed-use campus. And lastly is attracting new business and clean industry. As just mentioned, also before in Policy Eighty-Six on the last slide, the units have the potential for spaces for new startups, as well as for existing businesses to expand. Here's the list of agencies that were notified of the proposed development, and we're given the chance to comment on the project. Of these agencies, we only heard from one. That was the Post Falls Police Department, and they were neutral to the development. This concludes my portion of the presentation for Nagel Storage Special Use Permit, and I'm happy to take any questions you have.
I have a couple of questions, and I apologize, I thought I had printed out the map of the site, or the building. Is it, there's onsite parking, I believe I saw that, right?
There will be onsite parking, yes.
Is it sufficient, I mean, is it, is it just like the minimum for what it's going to be, or have they exceeded it for onsite parking, or?
I can let Ace Solutions speak more to that. It has not been analyzed, it just shows onsite parking. We haven't calculated it out for the size of the storage units and offices. We haven't gotten to that part. It will be reviewed during the site plan review process.
Okay, and then the other question too is, is, they're being, going to be sold as individual units. Is there anything that would stop somebody from buying like six units and making it all one big business or anything, or is it, does it have to stay the individual units?
Um, I think that will be, again, up to the current owner on how they want to develop it, and if they're willing to sell it to one, or if they want to keep it individual businesses.
So we're, we're going to approve or disapprove based on, they could change this whole scenario, really?
They, the intent of the special use is to allow for the office warehouse-type construction, not necessarily approving it as a condo or rental, or who moves into it. They could have a commercial business or retail store there, and that's outright permitted in the zone, or they could do some sort of small-scale manufacturing, and the special use would allow for that.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you, and we will turn it over to applicant.
Good evening, this is Roger Glessner with Ace Solutions, and we represent the owners of this project, 609 North Calgary Court, Post Falls, Idaho. And thank you, staff, for the thorough review of the code and how this, this proposal fits within the current and future planning for this area. We, we agree that the warehouse business will fit good with this, this area. The access to the freeway and Pleasant View gives it a good avenue for traffic to go out there without going through residential, or, you know, or the heavier residential areas, so they would have direct contact to the, or connection to the freeway or Pleasant View, would keep the traffic going in and out that way. Just south of there is a truck stop, fueling station, and, you know, so we have big trucks and trailers coming in there now. We don't anticipate that type of use at this location, just mostly because the units are fairly small, and the access to the site through the shared access with the motel is constrained to where you can't get big trucks or big vehicles in there, really. It's, it's more or less a van accessible, or just a vehicle accessible. The type of use that we anticipate for this development would be small business, maybe a electrician, or plumber, or maybe even a print shop, or a copier supply, something like that, where they would have minimal staff on site, but it would give them a location to store or warehouse supplies that they would use every day out in the, out in the construction field, or whatever's related with their business, and be able to secure tools and equipment within the buildings. The buildings also, individually, we propose that they would have roughly a 200-square-foot office area inside, so maybe one person, staff, and maybe only part-time occupied, and basically a place just to do some paperwork, do some of the business for a smaller-type business enterprise. So that, that's what we anticipate would go there, and, and again, some of the reasons why it would be that is because some of the constraints, one of them is access, parking, stuff like that. There really isn't room for large business there. It's more of a small-business-type enterprise. Also, these type of anticipated businesses would fit well with what's going on in the Post Falls area with the housing and commercial development that's going on around there with plumbing, electrical, and, you know, different type of services like that. We think that that would, that is definitely need for this area, and this is a good location for that. Without going through all the comprehensive plan designations and the zoning designations, we do agree with what the staff had found and has presented tonight. We believe that this is a good fit for this area, and it is a business office-related need for the I think that's all I have for right now. If anybody has any questions?
Questions for applicant?
I just have a quick question. Would the finished job on these be like, dependent on what the occupant was going to be, whether it be just a door to come into the, to their, their unit, or whether there's a roll-up door to come into their unit, or is that how it would be finished off?
Yeah, and what we're proposing is just a three-foot-wide access man door, or access door, with a roll-up garage door on each unit, and that's all, that's all we're proposing.
Thank you.
Any other questions for applicant?
I don't have any.
Okay, thank you very much. Any public comment input, either in favor, neutral, or opposed?
None.
Okay, no need for rebuttal then, so I would make note, I did see Mr. Stephenson, is he back? Is he on? Okay. For the record, any questions for anybody else, staff, before we close this out? Commissioners?
No.
Going once, going twice? Okay, so we'll go ahead and close it out, and open things up. Nancy?
Um, I think it would be a great fit. I like the idea of having the, the storage with the, with the, with the office space as well, and I've seen it done in some other areas, and I think it works well. I think there's a lot of businesses that can use a space like that, that does have enough office to accommodate their bookkeeping, and yet it is warehouse, so, so they can actually run their business out of it. So I think it, I think it would be a great fit there.
Ross? Did he freeze up?
Mm-hmm.
Vicki, Joe, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I have to agree with Nancy. I think we're seeing more and more of this type of a construction. It accommodates various businesses, and I think it would fit very good right there.
Mr. Stephenson?
Can you hear me?
I can.
All right, so I'm on my backup, backup right now. I'm not sure what's going on with internet.
Third time's a charm.
Yeah. No, I, I read the report, and I only, I heard half of the testimony, but I, I do think it's a perfect area for this type of business, and I definitely think a special use permit in the CCS zoning is perfect for that area.
Okay, Ross, are you back with us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah, I was, I agree. I think that this sort of space is really important to the Post Falls economy. Seems to be a very good spot for it. I know of people that are in the area right now, trying to grow their small business, and there's very, very little available, so I think anything we can do to, to help this is a good idea, and I'm happy to see somebody investing in our community here.
Absolutely. I would agree with the rest of the Commissioners, I think, in light of what 2020 showed us, I think the idea of warehousing, having areas to be able to ship, whether it's internet-based business, whatever that might look like. I feel like there's a complete shortage, and I think this is going to be a, a good fill and a good solution for growing businesses. So I guess at this point, we would entertain a motion if a Commissioner would like to put one forth.
I will. I move to approve Nagel Storage Special Use Permit number 0002-2020, as presented, finding that it meets the approval criteria in the Post Falls Municipal Code.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion and second, call for vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Schlothauer?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes. All right, this brings us to the second public hearing of the evening. We'll go ahead and open that up. Mr. Manley, I believe you're presenting.
Good evening Commissioners, John Manley, Planning Manager here, City of Post Falls, presenting the Britton Place Subdivision, case file S U B D 10 2020. The owner is McCarthy Capital out of Coeur d'Alene, and their representative is the applicant, Dobler Engineering of Coeur d'Alene as well. The requested action is to review and approve the proposed 4.7-acre subdivision, determining that it meets the requirements found within Post Falls Municipal Code pertaining to subdivisions, that's Title 17. Looking at the project location here- Looking at the project location here of the proposal, it is just west of Greens Ferry Road, west of Britton Place. It goes to a Green Meadows subdivision, just to the east. It's a new subdivision, so this is just going to be due west of that. Little bit north of Fieldstone, with a little bit more of a older subdivision in Post Falls now. Currently, the land use is vacant and undeveloped lands. There's no significant topography or vegetation matters on it. The proposed density is five-point-nine-seven acres gross. This is within the residential mix zoning district. Recently, it's been annexed in with that zoning designation that also accompanied a development agreement along with it. The water provider is Ross Point Water District, with the sewer being provided by the city of Post Falls. Looking at the zoning that sea of yellow you see around it, that's the R-one zoning district. That's more of your historic, single-family zoning district that's been in Post Falls for some time, with that residential mix zoning district being more of your newer zoning districts. Because of the proximity of the recent approval, this map hasn't been updated with the color, nor have we even assigned colors yet for some of these mixed-use districts. So, but that is the area that you see there that is going to have that RM zoning. Looking at the proposed subdivision, you see here, it's a little exaggerated because of the way the PowerPoint transitions the video feed to this monitor, but the parcels aren't quite that long and skinny. But looking at the lot widths and size, they're consistent with the development agreement, and that's what the development agreement called out, is that these lots in the plan generally conforms with a development agreement, and that is the case in this. They did throw in some community swales you see here, and in tract A is that open space that was within that development agreement. So looking at the review criteria, what we're looking for is, are there water supply systems adequate for a proposed subdivision? So the first one there in the staff report, you see in some more detailed analysis, but exhibit A four is the will-serv letter, so that would meet that criteria. Looking at the second one, ability to provide sewer systems and connectivity to that. I think it was identified that we have capacity on the east side of the road. It was extended as far as Green Meadows, so it would meet that criteria. Looking at the proposed streets, and is it consistent with the transportation elements of the comp plan? That was also identified in your, in the staff report as meeting that element. The fourth one, looking at any soil or topographical conditions that present hazards, there was none identified in the staff report or been brought forward. And is it zoned for the proposed use? And that's where the dovetailing into that development agreement's important. So you get that residential mix zone, you get that development agreement. The proposal's consistent with that, therefore would meet this criteria as well. The sixth one deals with developments paying for its fair share. And with single-family, how that's accommodated is through impact fees. And impact fees help pay for parks, streets, and public safety. So with each building permit, they would pay that impact fee with each house. In the staff report, this wasn't one of the conditions that you've seen in there, but when you're looking at some, I'll go back to the lot width slide here. One of the staff's concern is, is with some of these, thirty, thirty-seven feet, if you put in the minimum, if you put in a twenty-four-foot-wide drive approach that often accompanies single-family residents, doesn't leave a lot for on-street parking, and it doesn't leave a lot for garbage or mail-type delivery services. So adding that condition, that the drive approach within the driveway is no more than forty percent the width of the lot, provides enough space. So that gets it down to almost about fourteen and a half feet on the narrow lots for a driveway approach, leaving about twenty-one, twenty-two feet outside, so you can get an on-street parking stall outside of that drive approach. So staff's recommending we add that condition to this project. Now onsite, if they want to widen it, they can, as they may, once they get outside the right-of-way. Here's the agencies that was routed of that. We did hear from the Post Falls Police. They remain neutral, and the Highway District had no comment. So do you have any questions for me at this time regarding this proposal?
I would just like to, to, I guess, confirm that, so the residential mix, it's, it's not even on our, I, I'm not even seeing it on my little, you know, you know, bulk placement and regulations for, for lot sizes and, and minimum, minimums, lot minimum sizes, and so there is, does it, does it not go on here because it's specific to the development agreement? Or is there a, does residential mix have a minimum lot size, and if so, what is that? Does it have a maximum dwelling per, you know, how, how many dwellings per acre? I mean, does it have that, or is that just part of the development agreement?
It's embedded in the development agreement. There's some boilerplate zoning issue, like with the residential mix, but there is no minimum lot size, because it's supposed to flex. It's kind of a quasi-Euclidean form-based type approach to, when I say Euclidean, that's just your typical R-one, R-two, R-three zoning that you're familiar with, versus smart code was your form-based code. So this is kind of a hybrid that's managed through the development agreement that sets those parameters. One of the parameters I didn't mention, this was approved, is only being a either single-family attached or a detached product, so you wouldn't see lot consolidations and multifamily going in this. You wouldn't see fourplexes going in here. They're going to be single-family units on their individual lots.
Okay, okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that, that does answer my question, yes.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
Hey, John, could you go back to, what was it? Is it condition nine? That's not in the staff report. Could you go back to that slide real quick?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, anything else for John? All right, thank you, sir. Turn it over to applicant.
Here, I'm going to try to help him get the, if I don't mess it up here. There we go. Okay, there you go, it's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Gordon Dobler, Dobler Engineering. I'm the applicant for McCarthy Capital on this subdivision. Appreciate your time. I don't have a lengthy presentation, but I did want to focus on a few key items. So this is in the RM zone subdivision, and as you guys pointed out, the development agreement does specify single-family. So the intent here is twin homes with joined driveways. So the driveway condition really isn't going to be a problem, because we'll have common driveways on the lot line and twin homes with joined common walls on the property line. And that's, that's the reason for the, what, what appears to be smaller lots. So they'll be, they'll be joined, and we'll still have frontage, about fifteen feet plus or minus of frontage per lot, not taken up by driveway, so we can conform to that. Again, you've seen the staff's presentation, comp plan designation is residential. The RM could have more density, or not more density, but different products, but in this case, through the development agreement, again, it'll be single-family, either joined, or we have a couple of lots where we might have detached product. Surrounding zoning is R-one, as I just said. We, we will conform to single-family residential product. Just some specifics you've seen before, minimum lot size, median, max lot size. I do want to point out what the RM zone comes with two new items that we've already talked about. One would be the development agreement that was approved with the annexation agreement by council. And the second one is the open space requirement. So in this, in this subdivision layout, we've got the open space over here, which comprised, what, well, seven-point-oh-two percent. I just want to point out the generosity there.
Oh-two, thank you.
Yeah, and that is exclusive of the utility easement, that typically is ten-foot strip along the right-of-way. So, or behind the right-of-way, so that is exclusive of it in addition to that. In this case, it'll be a passive open space, probably some, you know, benches and that kind of thing, place to walk the dogs, that kind of thing. Access is a minor arterial, which is Greens Ferry, which we've talked about already, provides connectivity for transportation to the north, and that's important because staff's goal is to minimize the future connections on the Greens Ferry. So as this project, as the properties to the north develop, this road will be extended and eliminate, or at least facilitate the reduction of more accesses, XSI, whatever the plural is on that, on Greens Ferry. Passive view park and the open space and the common swales, and then the frontage on Greens Ferry will be maintained by an HOA. Utilities, we've already said, Avondale, Post Falls Sewer. The stubs were installed with the Green Meadows subdivision at the connection with Brighton. So we have sewer and water already into the property line, which reduces or eliminates the need to get back into Greens Ferry and, and cut it again, brand-new street. So good thinking on staff's part on that one. That's it. Okay, any questions for applicant?
No.
No? Anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir. Public comment in favor, neutral, or opposed?
None.
There is none, so there is no need for rebuttal. Any questions before we close things out?
No.
Nope, okay. We'll go ahead and, and close things out. Ross, I'll start with you.
Well, it looks like a, a good fit for the new neighboring properties. We haven't seen many of the twin home developments, but I've seen a few in other areas, and it looks like it'll be another product that might fit some families better than the the existing product next door, and I, I think it looks like a good fit.
Vicki, Joe?
Um, yeah, I agree with Ross. I think that that's a good product in between the houses, and it's not putting apartments there, but it is allowing for some construction that's a little less than a single-family dwelling. So, yeah, I think it's a good fit there.
James?
Yeah, same thing. You know, I think this has come up a couple of times, is that missing middle as far as houses, and I think this is a good fit, that the mixed houses. I think Fieldstone has some of those, and they're a pretty good product over there. So I think it's just, that area's just going to keep getting filled in as we go into the future. And I think Greens Ferry actually had some improvements on the road with the development of the subdivision across the street. So I think this is good timing for this, some mixed, mixed development in there.
Nancy?
I am going to agree. I think it, it is going to fit a need.
Absolutely, I agree as well. I think it's a good example of why it was created, and I'm excited to, to see that take place. So I would entertain a motion at this time.
A quick question. Is this a motion to approve or a motion to recommend approval?
Approve.
It is an approval, yes.
Okay, all right. Then I will go ahead and do that. I move to approve, let me look on here real quick, Brighton subdivision, S U B D zero zero one zero, twenty twenty, finding that it's consistent with a comprehensive plan and adopting the findings, conclusions, and conditions contained in the staff report, item, conditions one through eight, and the addition of item nine as described by staff.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. Call for vote.
Hampy?
Yes.
Schlothauer?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
All right, that takes care of the public hearing portion of this evening. We are moving on to new business. Mr. Manley, any new business to discuss? Okay, administrative or staff reports?
Nope.
Nothing there as well. Commissioners, both present and virtually, anything to add for the good of the order?
No, I hope everybody had good Christmas and New Years. Twenty-one can't be worse.
Well, here's to a successful twenty twenty-one, and before we adjourn, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there's a warning out for high winds. So as if I wouldn't say be safe anyway, be extra safe. So I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.